I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no scheduled speakers. First up, we have a proclamation from the mayor.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. As you see, we're joined by some distinguished guests over here. A little history on the Masonic Lodge and some of their membership. Eleven U.S. presidents were Masons. Eleven signers of the Declaration of Independence were Masons. Sixteen, or nine former mayors, were members of the Masonic Lodge. And I screwed up somebody here. Eleven something were also members in the Masonic Lodge.
Eleven presidents.
Eleven presidents, okay, that's it. That's it, I did get it right, thank you very much. So it's, you've got a very rich history. And you also have a history in Mount Airy. I know you used to meet over at the old movie theater. It was very ornate up there, and I love what you did up there. But then you moved down to Love's Church on Woodville Road and totally rehabbed that building, made it a beautiful opportunity. And then I know at one point, you even offered it up for community use. We do appreciate that. We didn't accept that offer, but we do appreciate that you made that offer. So we are here tonight to recognize you and your service to the community that we very much appreciate. Whereas Prudence Lodge, 190 AF and AM of Mount Airy, Maryland, has been a valued member and contributor to the Mount Airy community for the last 126 consecutive years, producing, it's a long time, producing many local leaders, including at least one mayor. Yeah, it says one, so we're gonna check, cross that out. We're also gonna go to Mount Airy spelled with a Y. Whereas the Lodge has registered over 1,000 children in a children ID program, free of charge, giving permissions, a packet of identification, in an Amber Alert format. Whereas the Lodge has contributed to many disaster relief efforts over the years, most recently to the two fires in town, with monetary relief and assisted in the tornado cleanup efforts. We very much appreciate that. Whereas the Lodge has, for over a dozen-plus years, donated $500 per year to scholarships for South Carroll High School students. Whereas the Lodge has delivered, over the last several years, Christmas boxes stuffed with food and gift cards to local needy families. These individuals are always identified by a local church group. Now therefore, I, Patrick Rockingbird, on behalf of the Mount Airy Town Council and the citizens of the town of Mount Airy, officially recognize the Prudence Lodge, 190 AF and AM for their accomplishments, and issue this proclamation this day. Would you gentlemen like to join me? And we'll probably have a photo shoot from somewhere. Tony Burke is not here. Do we have someone with a camera?
She's already photographed.
You got a photographer? You got your, I don't have my own photographer. You wanna do it from this angle or that angle?
I'll work.
And if you gentlemen would join over here by the podium. And this, your title again, sir?
Worshipful Master.
Worshipful Master, that's a pretty good one. I'd like to get a title like that. This is Jim Stargel, who's served on a lot of town commissions. And we all know his Bob Cage from the community, so I know many of them guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Prudence Lodge, we'd like to present you with one of our lodge pins. This here was for our 125th anniversary as being in Mount Airy. And this is also one of our grand lodge pins from the state of Maryland, the Grand Lodge of Maryland.
I will wear this with honor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Thank you all very much.
All right, next, we've got approval of council minutes. Let's start with the minutes for the public hearing on annexation resolution 42 from December 3rd. I will move, we accept those with the one change that went out, that Jason was not in attendance at that. The copy we have in the packet has him, but I think Colleen distributed one without that. Got a second from Bob? Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye. Up next, the council meeting minutes of December 3rd. I will move, we accept those with, I'm gonna move it with two changes. Bob pointed out one, I noticed the other one. In D and E, it both says "Vote all in favor." And those were both for introduction, so there would've just been a motion and a second. There would not have been a vote on those. Bob pointed out the one, and then when I went looking, I found the other one. Okay. You want a second on that one, too, Bob? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And then we have our closed meeting minutes. We got an updated copy with Tom's changes. I will move, we accept the copy with Tom's changes. I see Bob already. Any discussion on that one?
I made a couple corrections, which I think y'all made. Is that true?
In the new copy that Tom gave us, all Larry's got in there?
I made the changes about noon today.
I had one I got from Larry, so that was native. So another one? No, that's. No. Oh, okay.
I fixed it on the signature one, on that one, yeah.
Okay, great.
We all sorted out? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right. Police report. Chief?
Good evening, everybody. This is Chief Reed with the Mount Airy Police Department for the monthly Police Department Report. I'd like to start the evening off with a little bit of, with a training opportunity. In light of the recent F-1 tornado that went through town, the Carroll County Disaster Preparedness Group is offering a G-191 ICS/EOC Interface Course in cooperation with Maryland Emergency Management Agency. The date of the training is March 13th, from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m. at the Carroll County Public Safety Train, Public Safety Training Center. And basically, this course provides an opportunity for participants to begin developing an ICS or EOC interface for their community. The course reviews ICS and EOC operations. And what I'm saying, ICS, it's the Incident Command System, and the emergency operations communications responsible, and the functions depend heavily on exercise and group discussion to formulate the interface. For, I think most of you probably have had a similar course, or if not, you have an idea what it is, but it might just be a refresher. Since we've had an incident like that, it might be a good idea for us to maybe go back and do it as a refresher, so. If anybody, is there, can I have a show of hands, who might be interested in that? Anybody?
When is it?
It's March 13th, 2019, at the Carroll County Public Safety Training Center, from 8:30 to 4:30. It's basically an eight-hour block of instruction, just to kinda go over things and make sure that we're on point with everything we're doing and everything, so. If everybody would be interested into that, I can make sure we all get enrolled or whatever, so.
Yes, that's, yeah, it's the middle of the week for all of us, but, I mean, probably would be, you know, just, for me, that'd be hard to do.
You can put me on the list. Maybe I can relay info. And Bill, pull cart pool.
Gotcha.
And I would think some staff, too. I would think it might be a good idea, okay, John's going, okay.
John should definitely go. There's a party, I don't know if you wanna go. I've been to training prior, so definitely somebody must have seen you.
Okay.
Okay, that's good. That's good, I think it's key to have some staff there. They're the ones who tell us what to do anyways.
Okay.
In those situations, we're a lot of the pros.
I'll make sure we get that taken care of and get our folks enrolled. Okay, starting with the chief's report. We had seven trainings, meetings, and special events that we handled during the month of December. Just some of the highlighted items on December 6th. Myself and PFC Brooks attended the, and participated in the 12th Annual I Will Remember You Remembrance Ceremony presented by Catherine's Cause at the Carroll County, and the Carroll County Law Enforcement Community, at the St. John's Porter Kill in Westminster. Basically, that's an event where families that have lost loved ones to drunken or drug drivers come together with local law enforcement for, all over the county, to basically remember the loved ones that have been lost due to drunken and drug-driving crashes, and to promote education, awareness of the dangers of drunken and drug driving. And just note that this year, October 17th to October 2018, the county lost 16 people on our state and county roads to DUI crashes, so. We also attended the, and participated in the 30th Annual Overdose and Prevention Vigil presented by the Frederick County State's Attorney's Office, at your Ben Affair Department. That vigil recognizes loved ones that have been lost due to the terrible disease of addiction and also promotes awareness. As far as our community outreach this month, we had a very, very busy month. We had our Shop with a Hometown Hero event. That was on December 15th, and it was our second annual Shop with a Hometown Hero here at the Mount Airy Walmart. We met with eight great families. We started at JNP Pizza for a special breakfast with the kids, and then we walked down to the Walmart, and each child paired up with one of the hometown heroes and was able to shop for Christmas courtesy of the Mount Airy Walmart. I'd like to recognize those people that were involved. Paul McGrady, as always. Palmer took the lead, and he's the main person who made this event happen. He made sure all the kids were taken care of. He worked with Mount Airy Net to make sure that we can identify the kids and families that need a little extra help during the holiday season. And he worked with Walmart to obtain a corporate grant that secures the funding to allow it to happen. I'd like to thank my staff, Lieutenant Snyder, PSA Heather Smith, Corporal Halterman, PFC Brooks Bridges, Ginevra Long, and Police Officer Sheroy, the Maryland State Police, Maryland Troopers Association Lodge 51, the Maryland State Police Spider Team, and that's the State Police Impaired Driving Effort Team. All the personnel from the Mount Airy, Bruce, from the Mount Airy Fire Department, it's great to have them involved. The Mount Airy Walmart, Jason Gary, who's the manager, JNP Pizza, and Frank Iliano for opening his doors up and providing breakfast to the kids. We had a couple business guires telling, and a couple anonymous citizens who were very caring and contributed to the event as well. Part of that event also is kind of an extension of it, the Mount Airy Police Community Services Fund, we were able to provide the eight families that participated in the event with a full holiday dinner. Myself and the staff spent an afternoon shopping at the Weiss Market, and we put together our full-course dinners for the families, and then we delivered them on the eve of Christmas Eve to the families. So again, I'd like to thank the Weiss Markets, several businesses donated that, Mount Airy Liquors, Reading Sun Services, and American Legion Ladies Auxiliary, all made that possible, so. We also had a couple demonstrations and school talks we did this past month. Myself and Lieutenant Snyder met with the Manchester Valley High School Honors Law Classes in Society, and lectured on various law enforcement topics and the roles that police play in society from large to small agencies. Corporal Halterman also provided a lecture on the use of canines in law enforcement and provided them with a demonstration. Corporal Halterman also provided a talk and demonstration to the Mount Airy Lanes, to the Strikers League, so he did the same thing with them. Going to the overdose summary this month, we had four overdoses. Two were heroin-related, and one incident, law enforcement administered naloxone, and then the second incident, naloxone was administered by both law enforcement and EMS. For monthly performance, we handled 921 calls for service. There was five Part 1 crimes and 11 Part 2 crimes. Traffic enforcement, we made 158 traffic stops, issued 76 citations, 194 warnings, 17 repair orders, made five DUI arrests, and had three traffic arrests. On the criminal enforcement, we made 22 apprehensions and issued four civil citations, and we took 70 investigative reports for a month. That will be my report. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
I would tell you, I hate to see the overdose spike like that, but hopefully it's an anomaly.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Fire company, Bruce? There he is.
Our report for December, we had, I gotta pick it up here. Rescue calls, we had 101 in Carroll, 49 in Frederick, seven in Howard, and three in Montgomery for a total of 160. Fire calls, 20 in Carroll, two in Frederick, six in Howard, none in Montgomery for 28, which gave us a total of 121 in Carroll, 51 in Frederick, 13 in Howard, and three in Montgomery for 188 calls for service. We've had a change in our new leadership at the fire company. We have a new fire chief, Jeff Lowman, or as I like to say, Chief Lowman 2.0. But Jeff is following.
New and improved version, is that what Derek would agree with that one?
I won't comment on that, but I would just say that he's following in his father's and grandfather's footsteps in that family to be chief, but I think Jeff will be, do a fine job. Dan Cale will remain as president. I will continue also to be your liaison to the fire company. On January 20th, we will have our Big Country Breakfast coming up, so we hope to see everyone there. And just for your information, we did have our breakfast with Santa, and it was overwhelming. We actually had to stop at 10:20 instead of 11:00. We served 690 people before we just stopped running over to Weiss Market to get more supplies and had to close the doors, but it was a big success. It netted over $5,000.
Wow. Impressive.
So thanks to everyone and their children and all who came out. If you came out and we weren't able to serve you, we're sorry. Come the January one.
And Bruce, this is both to you and the chief. We were all thrilled with the card that you put together for them, which had Jason's son in it. Bob and I were both talking. When we first saw it, I just thought it was like some kind of a Rockwell print, until somebody said, "No, that's Dan Cale standing there." And then we looked at it, and we recognized that that was just beautifully done.
It was.
Hopefully, we haven't been sued by the Rockwell. But it was fun doing it. We enjoyed it, getting it all together.
Beautiful job. I didn't, when I first saw it, it took, somebody had to point it out to me that it wasn't artwork. All right. Next up, community concerns, this and comments. This is a time we set aside if there's any issues anyone wants to approach the council on. I see Pete coming up. Is there gonna be anybody else? So I got, okay, we've got two, okay. Well, yeah, I'm trying to find out how many we have, because then if we have a lot, then I'm going to come up with some kind of time limit, because we're trying to set aside 15 minutes for this. But since it's just the two of you, it's not a problem, and I know Pete won't take all 15 minutes. He's a professional at this. Heather, you have three minutes.
You're very kind. Pete Ellis, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Mount Airy Historical Society, and I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year from the Mount Airy Historical Society. An announcement I wanted to share with everyone that effective immediately, the Mount Airy Museum will be open on Saturdays and Sundays, 12 to 4:00. So I invite everyone to come down and see the new improved museum. It's awesome. It truly, truly is. So in November, I was here and asked about nomination forms for the Mount Airy Historical Society's Hall of Fame. And I'd like to thank everyone who actually nominated someone, those in the room that nominated, and the folks at home. Thank you very much. It was very encouraging. We, this year coming up, the Historical Society will be 20 years in nominating people for the Hall of Fame. Thank you. Thank you, Mount Airy, and thanks to all the citizens for all the things that you do. It's just absolutely wonderful in my mind. So, the 20th Hall of Fame, tickets will go on sale for the Hall of Fame, February 1st through March 2nd. And the only location selling the tickets will be the Blossom and Basket Boutique in the railroad yard behind the museum. So now we know where that is. Ticket prices this year will be $25. The banquet will be on the 19th of March, that's Tuesday, the 3rd Tuesday, at the Mount Airy American Gold Star Post 191. Ticket prices will be $25. So I think we covered everything except who the honorees are this year. And the inductees this year in 2019 are Mrs. Mary Hushour, Mr. Bill Butts, Mr. Wayne Esworthy, Mr. Frank Iliano, and Mr. Bruce Walsh. To those folks, congratulations from the Historical Society. Thanks for all you do for our town. Thanks for all the folks do for our town. I do want to share one more thing. The Historical Society receives 200 seats, 200 seats at the American Legion Post, and in the past, tickets have gone really, really fast. So come February 1st, I would be making a trip over to the Blossom Boutique. Again, from the Historical Society, Happy New Year. Thank you for all you've done, you volunteers. We, as citizens, appreciate it. Thank you.
Pete, that's March 19th?
Yes.
Thank you. Heather?
Thank you. Heather Hobbis Michael, 1919 Redding Court. Just want to address again, I know that some of my neighbors went to the Streets and Roads meeting last month, and they plan to be there again tomorrow. I cannot attend tomorrow, and I thought I'd go a little bit bigger and get your all's attention about the traffic problems that are happening. As you know, we have a great business in town, Center Stage Performing Arts, and I think that what we need to balance here is keeping that business afloat, which is so important. It's the only remaining dance company in the area, in our town. The other two have closed. So I want to make sure that we balance, making sure that that business can survive in light of the fact that many of our neighbors, my neighbors, are expressing some concern about the parking habits and the driving habits that are happening on the evenings. When it first came to the mayor's attention, he right away sent out crews, and they did no parking signs on one side of the road, because they are able to park in front of the Dirt's Ball Building, and that has been fantastic, so immediate relief there. The issue remains, though, that I think that a lot of these patrons are not Mount Airy residents, is that they're not really understanding the concern, is that they are constantly pulling out and U-turning right in the middle of Backacre Circle, and it happens quite frequently. It's happened to me four times just since classes started back up, and so statistically, that's a pretty high number for an I-1 driver, and there's, you know, thousands of people that live down in my community. So I'm here to kind of bring a little bit of awareness to it, to emphasize finding a win-win situation, to ask for some attention beyond streets and roads, to ask for the Mount Airy Police Department to monitor the situation carefully, and just have some really open dialogue about it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, quick question. I did send an email out today to your HWA Vice President, Patty Washam, and the chief regarding that, because that particular issue just came to my attention very recently. Chief, just in general, if you, and I believe that, are there double yellow lines? Is it illegal in the state of Maryland to make a U-turn?
As long as there's clear line of sight, there's nothing that prohibits the U-turn from happening there.
Unless it's marked as such.
Well, we don't need no U-turns all the way down, I don't know.
The only time you're permitted for making U-turns is when it's basically on a curve or on a crest of a hill, under Maryland law, unless it's posted accordingly. You'll have to have signs possibly to say, "No U-turns," and then it's a violation of a traffic device. It needs to be posted as such.
Can you, and I didn't.
If they're making U-turns, as long as they can do it safely, it's a legal movement.
So that's one of our struggles, but the reason for the U-turns is.
If they're making U-turns in front of a traffic, another vehicle.
And you can get, I know, but it's almost like you have to have a person there the entire time.
Right.
Or at least in the peak hours when you're breaking, and I don't know if they break, I'm sure they have several classes, so there is no real peak. It can be every hour could happen, and I don't know if we can dedicate an officer to sit out every night. But the problem for the U-turns, and it will help, it's not gonna stop it, is when that road goes through. So that's why Barney was also copied on that email. We don't own the road yet. We can't put it through, but Barney's gonna do whatever he can do to expedite, so we'll do that, and if the chief can give us a suggestion where it may be unsafe to make a U-turn, maybe we could put a couple of U-turn signs up.
And chief, can I ask a question? What would your recommendation be for our neighbors? There's some people that are detailing incidents where people are actually following them back to their homes. In my instance, when the car turned out in front of me, they stopped in the middle of the road. I beat my horn, they refused to move. So we certainly don't want people to feel unwelcome in our town, and I certainly don't want people to start arguing over this. And again, it's so important that we support this business because economic development is so important in this town. So what would you suggest that the citizens do when we encounter that type of, I don't wanna say controversy, but it's getting a little not comfortable.
Are they pulling out in traffic and interfering with the movements of traffic?
I had to slam on my brakes four times.
That's when you get a tag number, identify the driver, give the police department a call, and let us handle it.
Okay. And if you know, I get the tag number, I just want to know from my neighbors, because if I get the tag number and I give that to you, I'm not a law enforcement individual, so as my eyewitness, is that enough for you to follow through on?
Well, if it comes down to, if you feel strongly enough about it that you need, want to go to court and testify and so forth, then the officers can issue a citation, and you could be subpoenaed and go to court to testify. Of course, then it'll be up to a judge, he's gonna hear two sides, he's gonna hear the other party's side, he's gonna hear your side, and the judge has to make a decision what to do. So it's, you know, up the dome. So that's kind of our avenue. If we can't issue a citation if we don't witness it.
Correct.
Basically, so if you would feel that strongly about it, if you're willing to go to court, well then, we could identify the driver, as long as we can identify the driver and do our investigation, and at that point, if we want to proceed, we can issue a citation and subpoena you to court.
I will advise my neighbors.
One other thing, and I will not be at the meeting, so if you could just relay from the email that I sent, the owner of the property, Mr. Dirt's Ball, has also added a lighting battery pack to one of the lights, and over the holidays, I have not been out there to personally assess. I do plan to go. I'm sure Patty's been by.
For the back, for the parking?
Yeah, he's added lighting, so let's see if it's adequate. I have not verified it, but he told me in an email that he did add lighting.
Well, I drove by on Friday evening to see if that had been done, and if there was, you know, more parking that was taking place at the back of the building. And actually, Larry was with me, and we found that there was quite a few people that were parking in the parking lot. In fact, when I saw how many people were parking in front, there is no way that they could have all fit in that parking space. And I think some of the problem is that people are getting off work, maybe after 5:00, and so those people are leaving, but if the classes are starting before 5:00, then there's not enough parking for them to park actually in that parking space. But I wanted to add that I think it might be beneficial to talk to the dance instructor, the business owner, and explain what the situation is concerning the U-turn.
We have, we have. Oh, not the U-turns, though. The U-turns are something new.
Yeah, the U-turns, because she is relaying information to the people, and I think there's been a little bit of improvement, 'cause I didn't see, I mean, I saw people parking right in front, and I can understand now that I see the visualization, they want to just go up the stairs and get into the front door, and a lot of the parking is in the back, and there's no entrance in the back, so they're avoiding, you know, doing that. So I understand the situation, but maybe if we can.
I can bring that up to her.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
That would be, did you and Larry notice lights, flasher lights? Were they out?
I don't know about flasher lights.
But there were safety lights?
I just saw more lights in that back parking lot.
No, actual warning lights where they're parking?
Oh, many lights, I did not see that.
My question is, he's got that back door closed with a sign on it that says you can't go through it. My question is, inside that building, is there, is there a pathway to go through the building and get to the dance studio? And I don't have that answer.
Right, 'cause there is a door up there.
If there is, he oughta open up that door and allow people to go through.
Right, because then people could park there and then just walk through and go the back way.
Without having to go all the way around.
I'm trying, it's been a while since I've been in there, so I'm trying to remember.
I actually toured it about three weeks ago. I walked through, but I wasn't looking at the entrance, but we have a good situation here in that the owners of the studio and the owner of the building are trying to work with us. Ultimately, we can say, "No street parking for that business."
That's, I don't think that.
I know you don't want to go there, and that's why we're trying every effort possible, but if the complaints continue, that is our final resolution.
I guess my main point for being here is, again, I couldn't be there, and I'm really asking for some police presence down in our neighborhood.
And chief says he has been there, and I know the chief's hearing it tonight.
That's my main.
Concerned citizens that he serves so well.
Just want to see some vigilance there.
Heather, thanks for everything you do, by the way. You always do it with such grace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Ordinance and Resolutions, Annexation Resolution Number 42, Dorsey Town, this is up for adoption. Anybody want to move that one in? I guess that's, Jason's gonna move that one in?
Yeah, I'm moving it.
Got a second? Usually I look to planning or something to, Bob?
I'll second.
Bob will second, okay. Any discussion on this topic? Any discussion on this topic?
Uh, yeah. Today, at right around, I think it was 12:30, that we got the copy of the annexation, the drafted annexation agreement, and it was a few days ago that I was going through the annexation resolution and was identifying the things that were said at the public hearing concerning the developer's willingness to pay for connection fees for the existing property owners over in Dorsey Town. I'm not convinced that everybody in Dorsey Town has been able to see those documents. I understand that they were available. I understand that they could have come to Town Hall and looked for them, but I'm not convinced that they had the ability or the knowledge that those documents were available. Certainly not the annexation agreement, which I believe now would be a public document.
Yes.
Okay. So based on that, I think that it would be very worthwhile to table this for a month and give the existing residents a chance to take a look at what's being offered by the developer. I myself have, still have questions about the difference between why, in some areas of the resolution, it talks about the tapping fee, and then in areas of the annexation agreement, it talks about connections. So I'm not quite sure-
Good point.
What's the difference between a tapping fee and a connection fee, and what exactly is a fraud development offering to fund? And I think it's very important for the citizens in Dorsey Town to have a clear understanding of what exactly the developer is offering to provide. So based on that, now that it's been introduced, I would make a motion to table this resolution for one month to allow us time to ask some more questions and make sure that we're going the right way on this annexation agreement.
Okay. Anybody? Anyone else on that?
I'm curious, one thing, and Bill, this is probably between you and John. Our master plan, a 2013 master plan, we call for not annexing any neighborhoods into town. Is that what our master plan states, is actually everything will be in fill, in town? Or do we have some leeway there?
The priority in the master plan was to prioritize commercial and retail.
Bill?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
We're taking comment, by the way, just so people know, we're taking comments from Bill Butts, because he is on the planning commission.
Yeah.
So that's why that comment is being brought up at this point.
The priority, moving forward from the master plan update in 2013, 14, was to prioritize commercial and retail, and we're still recovering and managing from the consent agreement that Mount Airy was dealt within the early 2000s, which said we had overstepped our ability to permit individual residents. In the larger scheme of things, Mount Airy, in its strategic location, adjacent to so many priority employment areas, and in such a preferred place to reside, has a preponderance still of residential properties versus commercial and retail. And in terms of the future, where we need to generate more commercial revenue or retail revenue, and not be so hard-pressed going forward in terms of residential taxation, it's critical that we increase our commercial and retail presence. From that standpoint, the 2013 master plan update said the priority is on commercial and retail and industrial, okay? And we also realize that we had a very problematic situation in terms of our water supply, okay? It's always been very problematic, because we've got five different water areas that coincide, okay? So given those issues, and given the fact that we have had water failures, okay, in some locations in town, and not really knowing what our total available capacity was, but still being regulated by MDE, and still waiting to have finalization of potentially other capacity in areas like Harrison-Lashere, we said, folks have been waiting for a number of years. There is a pecking order in terms of those requests. So we're going to be very, very careful and very conservative in what other residential areas that we approve. That's just simply the reality of what we're dealing with in Mount Airy and the reality of land use. It has nothing to say with our recognition of the historical significance of a particular area like Dorsey Town. There's not that many parcels that are there, but at the end of the day, it's a concern of, do those residents really understand what's the reality, as Larry has laid out, of what the developer is willing to do? And fortunately, it's much more generous than it started out to be.
Yes.
At least it sounds that way.
Yeah.
It sounds that way. We need to clarify that. We also need to totally understand what's the impact to the town if we go forward with this.
Pat?
I just thank you, Bill, very much for the history on that.
Thank you. I wasn't sure whether a priority, you know, our priority being commercial and industrial, that we, even though residential's not a priority, can we still, do we have the openness to annex them in?
Okay, so a couple of things with annexations. I think we typically look at new land coming in and new homes being built. What you have here is an island of homes-
Right.
-surrounded by a sea of town. So with all things being equal, they're already using most of our resources, except for streetlights and trash removal that they would end up, and water that they would end up paying for in their taxes. So if it's just a one-on-one with the existing homes, it would probably be a good move to annex them. We're already providing services over there. They're already utilizing our services. We might as well get the tax dollars. That being said, when I hear developers coming forward paying tap fees, what is he trying to get out of it? And it depends on what I sent out, and the response was not to all, it was just to Larry. Depending on how many homes you want to add over there, there's your difference. But if it's existing homes, my suggestion to the council would be, that's a no-brainer. If they're willing to pay the taxes, bring them in. If they want to get 20, 30 more homes, I'd pause.
But I would sure like for us, like Larry says, you know, I've gotten this thing.
You sure?
You know, I arrived home at 5:30 this evening, and it's hard to down-
We did get updated packet, yes.
See, it's hard to download it and read it.
Yeah, it's been a holiday.
Maybe to cut this short, I have no problem with Larry's suggestion, based on what he said, so-
Well, then I will second, if I can, I will second Larry's-
Okay. So any discussion, let's limit to discussion on Larry's idea of tabling this, since we just got a final draft today.
And can we, I want to make sure that, you know, we have an opportunity to have somebody explain to us what this is going to work out, how this is going to work out for the residents, and maybe we should ask them if they're willing to wait another month.
Yeah, I'd be happy to hear from any residents, but that's up to the council president, so.
Yeah, I will say it is, it is your property to some extent, so if you want to address us on the issue, let us know.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Robin Johnson. I reside at 1113 Slay Hill Court. There are some outstanding questions that are yet to be addressed concerning hookup fees, road construction, and I guess the input from other residents, and other issues. So until these questions can be investigated and addressed, we respectfully ask that the vote be tabled at this point.
Okay, that's good enough for me.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else on the tabling it issue?
We have one more.
Ah, one more.
Good evening. My name's Sheila Cook. I'm the property owner at 1313, and as I shared last month with this town council, mayor, with all due respect to you, the property that I own has no water currently. Can't buy it, sell it, rent it, can't do anything with it, so I respectfully agree to tabling it for one month so that documents can be made known to all the residents, and then reconsideration could be given. Thank you.
Doc, you had your hand up. Did you have something you wanted to say? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes.
Overskapped my bounds, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President, Bob.
Sorry, O'Brien on 806 Park Avenue.
Hey, Doc.
I just wanted to remind the council of all the grief that you went through with one of those places that had a dry well with the MDE and all that stuff.
I was going to say, the Secoros were actually forced on us.
Yes, and it was forced on you, and you don't have any assurance that that may come back and be forced on you again-
Right.
-in the future.
Thank, I meant to bring that up.
And that should be part of your consideration with this.
Yeah, I meant to bring that up, Doc. I asked him on the side. But you need the facts.
Well, I guess, any more discussion on the tabling it issue?
No, I'm in favor of it because-
I got no problem with that either.
But I want to make sure that we're going to get, oh, I'm sorry. Come to the podium.
7:45, Hattlerwood Court in New Market. I own a parcel in Mount Airy that's up for annex. This is the first I've seen this document.
Okay.
So with you, I agree, I have not seen the document, but I should read it, and there's a lot of things I want to stand, especially your tap fees and everything else.
What's your name, sir?
Morrison, Jeff Morrison, 1205 from North Main Street.
Which lot do you own?
1205 North Main Street.
Oh, 1205.
Okay. I make that, the little V on the other side of the street.
Yeah, I was about to say, are you on the-
I'm on the other side of the street.
Okay, okay. You're that guy!
Where you guys been? I haven't been from you at all.
We tried knocking on your doors and-
We were knocking on doors, yes.
We couldn't figure out the duplex and-
On a Sunday afternoon, and it's a tough day to get somebody.
And the Ravens were busy.
I agree. I'd like to go ahead and shelf it and have a chance to look at this.
All right.
And see where we go from there.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of tabling this till next month's meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, looks unanimous to me. That'll give us a chance to sort out exactly what the changes were that we got today.
Yeah, thank you.
With the stipulation that the documents will get to them as soon as possible.
I'm not sure how that's done. I think they're probably going to be posted on the town website, so you can get them.
They need to be in their hands.
You know what, and I don't know why we overlooked this, are we posting that property down there that's in consideration for annexations or not? We need to right away?
I didn't see any signs.
Yeah, we need signs up. And it said the developer would-
Problem is, it's private property.
No, we post-
We post private-
Any development changes, we'll post those.
Yeah. But you would put a sign, say, on somebody's property that was, you know, let's say they don't want to be annexed, you would force them to have a sign?
No, we would probably just put it in a general line.
Okay.
In easement.
Yeah, let's get some signs down there so people in the area know what's happening.
All right. Ordinance 2018-20.
Before we move on, I'm sorry. Pat, you had mentioned upwards of 30 houses. There's only five.
Yeah, it's only a few additions.
It would be five additional houses.
Is that what the developer's asking for?
Yes.
Yeah.
Five additional.
Okay, good, thanks, thanks, sir.
Five acres back there.
12 altogether?
Well, we're hearing 12, and we're not sure if that's five new additional homes plus the seven existing, or if there's more. We were trying to walk it yesterday and figure that out.
And then when you talk existing homes, there's a couple that are not occupied.
Right.
I think that'd be an important decision for you guys.
Yes. I agree.
And I've heard-
And one problem too is those ones that are not occupied will probably come under the town's blight ordinance. So somebody who's got a property in there that's somewhat abandoned, that's going to be an issue. And also, there's one, I think there's got a lot of vehicles on it. That will then be in violation as soon as we annex. So property owners need to be aware of all those issues.
Yeah.
You're allowed one unregistered vehicle on your property in town.
Okay.
Sure.
Mine are all registered, and I'll drive a boy in a shirt.
Just barely.
I could start them all up and drive them off today.
All right. Thanks.
And Larry can all of his, too.
They're registered.
He's building more garage spaces.
Okay. Ordinance 2018-20, this is add a section to the town election regulations pertaining to provisional ballots. We introduced this, this is here for adoption. I will move it in for purpose of discussion. Is there a second?
Patty, Patty.
Patty got it. We'll give that one to you, Patty.
Thanks, thanks.
Patty's seconding that one. All right, any discussion on this one? I have several markups.
If I might address the council, I might solve some of your issues initially.
For those who don't know, Bruce is chair of our election commission.
Board.
A board, yes, election board, sorry.
Okay. First off, there needs to be a correction to the document you have on D2, the first-
That's the one I have, you're stealing my thunder.
Indeed, I handed that one. D2, I don't know that makes sense. Provisional ballot shall record given, record give. There's a, one word or the other. I imagine, should the election official issue the provisional ballot shall give the individual written information, so record should be struck. The other thing, and this addresses a concern you had, Peter, about the council, Section K should be completely stricken from the proposed ordinance, because the town charter in Section 511 covers the maintaining of voting records, and this is not consistent with that. And when Tom wrote this, he used the Maryland law, and that's where you get the reference to the archives and all. That is not applicable. We are required to keep them, the town is required to keep them for six months, as per Section 511 of the town charter. The other question you had was concerning the issue of the validation of the election. And if you go to the town charter, again, Section 511, it addresses the fact that within we have 48 hours, after closing of the polls, the Board of Supervisors of Elections shall determine the vote cast, reached candidate, or questioned, and shall certify the results of the election to the council secretary or town clerk, who shall record the results in the minutes of the council, and shall notify the persons elected of their elections. There is no requirement for the council to have any oversight of the election, which makes sense, because if, say, three of you were up for election, you all lost, you could vote, you could technically void the election, and that's not the intention. So it's another one of those issues where we've done things traditionally.
No, that's right. Well, that's why I raised the question, because I was like, if we have an absentee ballot, does that mean we have to have another council meeting to accept the results?
Right.
What you're saying is, we technically don't have to accept the results.
You don't accept the results. That's why there's independence of the election process-
No, that's good, that's good.
From the council.
I appreciate that. They're answering my questions.
So that would cover the issue of that, once we certify it, then that person would be sworn in at the discretion of the mayor for their service on the council. So you don't have to really continue to be in session even, waiting for the results, as you have in the past. It's merely a courtesy for us to essentially get them to you that soon.
Right.
And that also covers the event that the Board of Elections, County Board, might be closed for a holiday or something, or a special occasion came up, that we would have to delay the 24 hours. I think we should keep the 24 hours in there.
Right, and here it says until 24 hours after they next open, or something like that.
Right, and I think we should keep that in there, so that gives the person time to notify. And also, as Larry asked, and to refresh from the last month, we're only talking maybe one or two individuals, but we always have one or two individuals that come along and we have questions about, and the issue for everyone is, up until 5 o'clock, we can contact the county election office, and quite often, they work with us to go back and double check their records and things. If someone comes between 5 and 8 when the polls are open, we have no way of validating. And so, we turn those people away. And so, this allows us to make sure we don't disenfranchise any citizen of their right to vote by providing for provisional ballots, which has now become a state and national trend in voting laws. And that was the reason we put this proposal forward. And so, if you take what you have and you strike out Section K, then L becomes K and M becomes L on that page four of the document.
The only problem that I have with that, however, is that there's provisions of the state code that require us to file schedules with the state as to what our document retention policy is, including records of elections. And what we have on file with the state says we're keeping election materials permanently. And I believe that that is consistent with state regulation and/or ordinance. So, it may not be that this is out of step with what the state, this may be out of step with what the charter requires, but the charter, I think, may be out of step with what, out of step with what the state requires. So, it may have changed, I'll take a look at that.
I don't have my book with me, I have my hands full and get it down here, but if I remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce was talking about the ballots. We, we get rid of the ballots, and in our case, would only be the absentee ballots, honestly. Those types of things within six months. Anything else, we say. But the ballots, I believe what Bruce was talking about, is that...
The specific wording, as exists in the charter now, is all ballots and/or electronic voting tallies used in any town election shall be preserved for at least six months from the date of the election. And so, a provisional ballot would be a ballot which would fall and be handled the same as an absentee ballot, or if we did a paper ballot election, it would fall the same way.
We always got rid of them within six, usually six months or after, I use, because I'm a, the way I am, I usually would wait a little bit longer than that, but...
My concern with that practice is, is that that, it's not what we say in the document retention schedule that we have on file with the state archives.
I guess you'd want to find out from the State Board of Elections if they keep all the paper ballots that we cast in a state election forever.
You have to keep them forever?
Well, and they would go to the state archives, we don't have any way to move them to anyplace else.
Yeah, sure, we would move them to state archives now.
We do, I said, we do.
Okay.
I mean, we, yeah, but it's just that, we've always done that, I mean, that's what we have, honestly, we've always followed that. It's in our code, unless what, BJ and Betty, now I, we always follow that, which certainly can be changed.
So, maybe we need to over...
We can resolve that.
Yeah, I'm just gonna buy what is charter now, so...
Gotcha. I have one other issue, and that is D2, where you suggested striking out record, talking basically about giving instructions to the person on the provisional ballot, how they can find out what's going on. But it appears that Section H says that we have to send them written notification.
Of whether or not we accepted their provisional ballot.
Right, but isn't that what D2 is?
No, that is telling them the process that will be, how their ballot will be handled once they provide it, once they cast the provisional ballot. And so, we will tell them that we will take the ballot, it will be reviewed with the election, applicable county election authority to determine their eligibility. There'll be a vote specified in here, we've never done this, so we have to write that. But that's essentially what would be told to them, and when they can question whether or not their ballot has been accepted.
See, all it seems to me to say in 2, in D2, is describing how the individual will be able to ascertain whether the vote was counted, and if it was counted, the reason it was not.
Right.
And H requires us that they be sent written notification of the action taken on the provisional ballot and the reasons therefore.
Right, it's the same thing.
Right, we're repeating ours, so we're doing it in H, why do we need it again in D2? Because H requires us to mail it to them. So, why do we need D2 at all?
Well, this speaks to, it's, D says before an individual is permitted to cast a ballot, we would explain that process to them, so they know what will happen.
Okay.
That H is after the election.
So, you're saying, D2 is just saying what we're gonna do in, what we're gonna do in H2? We're gonna, we'll mail you a copy?
Right.
Okay, alright. And I also had a, and I raised this with Tom and Bruce, it seemed to me, the idea of the board has to unanimously reject a ballot that's been marked a provisional ballot, seemed to me maybe to be backwards.
So, that's taken from our current code, actually, with respect to the right, or the challenge of the right to vote in Section 10.
But we don't have a provisional ballot, this is somebody who comes in and insists on voting, and at least initially, when they show up, we don't think it's a valid ballot.
We don't think they're a valid voter.
Right, we don't think they're, right, when they show up, we don't think they're a valid voter. Valid voter. And it seemed to me that requiring unanimous to reject it was backwards.
I don't see what the backwards part is.
Because it's consistent with what we do on the challenge.
Right. I understand, yeah, I understand that, it just seemed to me that, you know, what, that the, to legal terms, the burden of proof should go the other way. Tom probably got what I was saying.
I see what you're saying, Peter, I'm not, I mean, I'm not sure I would go to the mat on it, but I understand what you're saying.
But it's an issue I did raise with them ahead of time, that it seems to me that once the ballots come in, and you go, oh, we think this is a questionable ballot.
Well, but we wouldn't...
Well, the provisional ballot, you know, that's right.
They wouldn't cast the ballot, and we wouldn't know that that, know that ballot. There's no way to identify the person to the ballot.
Right.
So, all this question...
Well, probably, as a practical matter, you're gonna have one.
What this question is, their ability to cast a ballot.
Right.
Not the ballot itself.
Right, so you're...
So, we would, so if someone showed up, and they said they were Peter Halt, and then gave you an address, and we, of course, we all know you, we'd say, oh, wait a minute, you're not this person. Then they insist that they are, then we could vote and say, no, we're not gonna let you vote because we know you're not the real Peter Halt. That would...
And if one person on your commission, you know, thinks differently, then that invalid, clearly invalid vote counts.
That's right, and we cannot prevent them from voting.
Correct, right. Which, I think that should be the other way. I think, I can understand a majority, if you can't, you know, if you've got a ballot that is already questionable.
No, you don't have a ballot, you don't have a ballot.
Well, they've cast the ballot already.
No, no, this is their ability to cast the ballot.
This is Dick Swanson explaining to them that they're gonna cast a provisional ballot.
Well, they're casting it by hand, but they come in, and there's no way to stop them from casting the provisional ballot. The question is whether it's accepted.
Right.
It requires unanimous, so they're coming in and they're casting a ballot.
They're casting a provisional ballot, which then we will determine their eligibility to count that ballot.
What I'm saying is, it requires you, their ability is assumed, and it has to be unanimously struck. And I think that's backwards.
Well, no, it's not, if somebody comes in, say, at 3 o'clock.
Correct.
And we run into this situation, we call up to Carol Camp, and we talk to them, and they say, oh, we made a mistake, yes, that person is registered.
Right.
There's no vote taken, we just say, go, we'll adjourn it to the restaurant, and they vote.
But somebody comes in at 6, okay, they wanna vote, you're pretty sure that guy can't vote.
So, we would do the same.
He gets, he casts a provisional ballot, even though you, you know, you guys all, you know, don't think, it requires...
Then we would take that ballot, we would come back, the next day, we would call them and say, we have this person's, because they would provide us their name and address.
Right.
And we would say, double check this, and then they would go through and say, oh, we made a mistake, yes, they can vote, then we would count that ballot, there'd be no question about it.
It requires unanimous to reject it.
No, no, right, to reject it.
It requires unanimous to reject it.
So, now if the county comes back and says, you can't, we don't have any record of that person, then...
It requires unanimous to reject it.
Then we would reject it.
Right, but it requires unanimous to do that, and I think if, if you can't get a major, you know, if, if you can't get a majority, you shouldn't accept it.
It ought to be unanimous to accept it, not...
Maybe the other way around, yes, or at least a majority to accept it. I think unanimous to reject it is a backwards way of doing it. Pat?
Just to bring up a point, it's very similar, it's not exactly similar, back in 2002, this town went to court. Actually, our elections board went to court over paper ballots that weren't accepted. The circuit court judge overturned that, he overturned the election of the mayor. So, what you're doing is very wise, you can debate back and forth about whether it's gotta be unanimous or not, but you definitely, because I was the one in the seat, and asked them to hold those paper ballots.
Although that was not an illegitimate ballot question.
I understand.
That was a who the votes were cast for question.
It's true, it's true, it's a little bit different, but it's still to hold those paper ballots and make sure they're verified.
Right.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, but that was a question of who the votes were cast for, and whether the votes were...
I acknowledge that, I acknowledge that.
And I think that if somebody comes in, and on the face, the ballot looks bad, and then you check it out, and the ballot is bad, you shouldn't need a unanimous vote to reject it.
In other words, we could just reject it because we would anyway, prior to, if the county told us no, we would tell the person no.
Correct, you would, right, you would reject, right.
So, we could, we would then just strike the vote part, and it would just be handled as well or not.
As it is now, the way it's written now, you require unanimous votes.
We'll make it easier for us.
You're actually, you're actually creating a great deal of protection for somebody who, you know, maybe, and we know that, like, people show up at the polls all the time who don't know where they live.
Right, we get a lot of out of towners that return.
Okay, yeah, a lot of people come in and vote, and they don't know where they live.
They don't vote, they don't vote.
Well, they try and vote, they try and vote.
Because we have people that come in that are not registered, they think they are, but they're not. They think that they, you know, are automatically registered by the grace of God, and they weren't.
Correct, but there's also a lot of people who come in who don't actually live in town.
Right, right.
Oh, I live in Mount Eric, you know, and they think they can vote.
And we also get people who own property in town but don't live in town.
Right.
Correct, and any one of those people could come in, insist, be given a provisional ballot.
No, it wouldn't be.
After 6 o'clock, you have to be.
No, not unless, because we require them to sign an affidavit that they feel they are a qualified voter.
Correct, and I'm assuming that they're going to make that assumption, even though we all know they're wrong.
And they have to show identification to us as to their address, so we can make sure that we will double check that they are a resident, or at least they're in the town limits.
Good stuff, just take right here.
Correct, well, but for example, a property owner, okay, they're gonna have a water bill.
But Waterville's not...
It doesn't mean they're registered, though.
Correct, but they're gonna have a water bill with a town address, which is gonna at least generate a town address, which is gonna get you a vote. I think, I think, I think it should be easier on you, I think rejection should be easier.
Okay, which it is now, actually.
Correct, right, you're making it harder for you to reject the ballot, and I'm just worried that's gonna be a hangup.
That was, Tom brought it from the state, and referenced back to the charter.
Yeah, the judge can overturn it, so you want it to be somewhat, but not unanimous.
So, that's why he wanted it to be consistent.
Right, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
But in this, this case, you're dealing with a vote that has already been through one level of vetting, so to speak.
Right.
And at that point, I, you know, I think unanimous is a little strong.
Okay, that would be fine with the board, I think that'd be fine with the board, but I can't speak for the board, but I don't see any reason...
We had several, we had several changes, crossouts, and other changes, do you want to table this one too, till we get a complete, full copy?
Probably have it.
I see Jason nodding his head.
I would say yes, I will.
Yeah.
Make sure I have it on the same page.
Yeah, it'd be up to Tom to clean up the issue of the ballot and the consistency with the charter.
Yeah.
I didn't hear, what was our mention? Table it.
I will, I will, I will move, we bring this up next month again, so I'll reintroduce it, and we introduce it and table it, in case we have a timeframe, I got a second somewhere? I'll give Jason that, when he looked at, he was faster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Bruce, that was some good discussion, and we had some of this in emails before. 2019-1, allow the consumption or possession of alcohol in open containers on public property. This is for the hometown chili cookoff, I will move, we accept that, do I have a second?
Did we miss one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, guys, I crossed off one too many, I was a little too quick. Going back to C, ordinance 2018-21, this is amending Charter 25 Planning Commission, this is two issues. Members have to be residents, and town council liaisons would not vote. Somebody wanna move that one in? Larry, you got a second? Patty? Discussion?
Could I, could I just start off, because you all are gonna debate? This has been an issue that's been a bit contentious, and I just encourage everybody to keep it fact-based, and I think everybody's here, their heart's in the right place, they wanna do what's best for the town, even though there's been some passion. Along those lines, I had hoped that we could get, an ex parte issue also comes into this, so along those lines, I had hoped that we could just get a legal opinion, flat out, just do it from a legal, fact-based perspective. And we can, on the ex parte issue, so I've asked Tom to actually write up rules for ex parte, when it becomes an issue, when it's not an issue, what timelines govern ex parte communications. That would be the same for a council member or a commission member. So, Tom's gonna write that up, so that can be pretty clean, that can be easy, there's really no debating, it's the legal way to handle it.
So, there's benchmarks that you have to...
Whatever is legal, Tom can advise the council what the legal way is to handle that. When you get to the council liaison voting issue, there is no legal issue, Tom cannot give us advice. It's all over the map, people do different things depending on their community, so you all are on your own. But towards that end, I had actually asked to bring Jason in, and then we couldn't have a quorum of counsel, I'd asked that we sit down with somebody that has over four or five decades of diplomacy experience, all the way up to a presidential appointee, Lavoy happens to live in town, and again, I sent his credentials out earlier, he's got books named after him, he's got schools named after him, he's got a building, he knows how to communicate, knows, and he came up with some great ideas, I don't know that any of them are gonna really apply. He couldn't give us a clean-cut opinion, I was hoping he went one way or the other, saying, yeah, I wouldn't do that, or yeah, I would do that. He really did, and he gave us some good, basic notes on, you know, this is how you could handle it. You didn't get them till late, and I apologize for that, it may not change your decision. So, as you go through the pros and cons, I suggest you look at fact-based, because good points have been made by both sides. Hey, I'm concerned about this, because I gotta tell you, and Scott Sergio's in the audience, I was all for liaisons should vote, and I was running with him, and he pointed out five points why they shouldn't, and by the end of our run, I'm like, you're right. I went back and investigated though, Scott, and now I'm the other way. So, but I see the points on both sides, just look at them fact-based and see if they apply, then you all, because you can do your vote. That's my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, I'll stand by the ordinance as it's written here, I do believe that there is ample opportunity for a council liaison at the Planning Commission to provide input and be a valuable resource communicating at the Planning Commission meetings. I just don't think that the vote is required, and I say that, you know, I mean, Patty and I are here for two more years, and if I end up the liaison, I'd surrender that vote, you know, without any problem, because as long as I can participate in the discussion and do my job as a liaison to communicate back and forth between the council and the Planning Commission, I think that's, that's the role that, that a Planning Commission liaison should perform. I think the biggest argument that I've heard against this would be that if you don't have a vote at the table, you may not have as much credibility when you're speaking. And I would point at the mayor and say, he shows up to a monthly meeting here where he has no vote.
He has a veto, though.
He does have a veto. But he obviously participates and provides a lot of valuable discussion, and like all of us small-town politicians, he's out there talking to people and shaking hands and getting opinions and doing his job as a elected official, whereas opposed when, to when you're on the Planning Commission, you're executing the master plan, you're making sure that the APFO is enforced, and things that are a little more tunneled in than being a elected official who's out there communicating with all your constituents and making sure that information goes back and forth. So, what I would say, you know, based on, on the previous vote from the previous ordinance, I would just say, if Jason's ready to vote, then I'm ready to take it to a vote, you know, whichever way it goes, and, you know, and we'll just have to deal with it, but at least we'll have an answer and be able to move forward from there, so.
I guess with all eyes on me, right? So, just some of my, just some of my thinking in going through this. I think when we get into the topic of ex parte discussion, it's a set of guidelines, what you, what you should and what you should not do. So, we're all held to that accountability anywhere we go in any voting matter. And it's up to us, in our hearts and in our minds, that we follow those rules. It's just a set of guidelines. And if I wanna have an ex parte discussion without any of you knowing, I could come to the table, say I didn't, and still have a vote, right? Did I violate it inside? Yeah, but it's still just a set of guidelines at the end of the day. And I think that when these people, the Planning Commission members, take that commission role as, as we do here, it's up to us and them to make sure that... as, as we do here, it's up to us and them to make sure that we follow those guidelines, so if we know, hey, I know who that person is, I need to, um, if I need to talk to them, I'm gonna be very blunt and general when I'm talking to them, and I'm not gonna give away any clues or hints or towards discussions, or what, what would you like, or what would you not like, how would you like me to vote, and what would you like at the end of the day? Um, that when I go and have that discussion, it is up to me to make sure that I listen to them, and I say, thank you for sharing your concern, and I turn around and walk away at the end of the day, so that I don't come with a ex parte, um, hat over my head saying, you violated this, these rules and regulations. Um, and I think that holds true for even the Planning Commission member and that, and I think, or the town council liaison, and that's why I think so many municipalities are up in the air, because it is, well, and I'm not saying it's necessarily a trust thing, but let's just negate that so that there are no trust concerns at the end of the day. And where some go, okay, well, we will trust you in saying, hey, when you are on this seat, you're not gonna have any ex parte, we trust you with that position, you're not going to do that, you go, yes, I got that, right? We still have all of that under us, whether we're on the Planning Commission or not, that when we come to this table, we didn't have any extra information, um, and that we didn't get anything from the planning developer, I didn't, you know, take anything, and so on and so forth. Um, so, I think at the end of the day, it's whoever holds that seat, do we trust that person to make sure? And do they, at the end of the day, know when they can and cannot have that discussion? Um, and, um, it's not to say that, you know, Councilman King that holds it, that I do or do not trust, I trust him as, as well as any of you, and future people, that when you come to hold this seat that I'm sitting in, or any of us are sitting in, that you're gonna follow the rules and regulations, that's why I voted for you. Um, and so, I'm still on the idea that, um, either we do or do not, um, have a vote. Um, and as you had mentioned, um, the mayor comes to all of ours without a vote, the last couple months, when I was attending my commission, uh, meetings, I did not have a vote, but I still felt very involved in the meeting, and actually, I felt like I needed to be a little bit more involved, so if I needed to add more discussion, they had that information, and that if I didn't maybe provide something, I still had the vote to kinda swing at my, my, you know, get my vote that way. Um, so whether I do or do not have a vote at the table during my commission meetings, um, I'm still going to attend, absolutely, that's my role, because at the end of the day, I'm still an information provider to you guys, you guys still need to know what's going on at my liaison meetings, and you trust me that I'm doing my job in that role. Um, and so, um, whether they, whether the Planning Commission liaison not get a vote, um, I, I trust whoever holds that seat to, to follow the rules and guidelines set forth, whether through the Planning Commission, um, through our charter, um, to hold whether with a vote or all of us without a vote.
Any, Bob, if you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I think what Jason was describing was, had, had way more to do with ex parte than, than it has to do with council liaisons voting at the meetings. Um, ex parte is something that, it's, it's something that the Planning Commission's gonna have, Tom has always talked from the very first time about benchmarks, when you achieve, uh, a neighborhood plan, or, or one of the, one of the, the benchmarks in the planning process, that from that point on, nobody is talking outside of the meetings, okay? And that's, yeah, I'm fine with that, okay? The, the problem with, with the, um, voting, the liaison's not voting, and I've just got something I wanna read here. At the February two thousand and eighteen Planet Committee, Planning Commission Monthly Meeting, a draft rules of procedure was on the agenda. The state of Maryland requires all municipal planning commissions to develop a set of rules as to how the meetings will run and how decisions will be made. Using some local jurisdictions as examples, Town Planner Heather Smith wrote a set of rules. Um, over the next few meetings, we discussed them at length, offered some changes and clarifications. During that process, it was noted that our long-term practice, that all council liaisons were voting members of their assigned commissions. Our town charter and town code neither endorse nor outlaw this practice. In his research, Councilman Huschauer states that he found that about fifty percent of the legislative bodies from local jurisdictions that he looked at allowed liaisons to vote, fifty percent did not. Ordinance two eighteen, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty one attempts to solve this problem by removing the right of council liaison to the Planning Commission from voting on planning decisions and/or recommendations. If it's wrong for the Planning Commission council liaison to be able to vote as a member of that commission, then it's wrong for every other, for every other council liaison to be voting in their commission. It's, you know, it's, the, the topic is planning, the topic is parks and recs, whatever the topic is, if it's, if it's not right for me to do it as a Planning Commission liaison, it's not right for any of the others to do it. Um, I mean, what's changed?
Guys, I'm, I'm not gonna be taking comment on this one, I can see people, okay, but I just, okay.
Um, where was I? Um, well, you know, what has changed in the last year? Nothing. What has changed in the last forty years? Nothing, they're still doing exactly what they used to do then. And, my, my final point is, in situations where casting a vote on the Planning Commission and the council table, the two legislative bodies are voting on vastly different issues, Larry mentioned this tonight, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback on that. Um, the Planning Commission is required to make a recommendation based upon the law, they are looking at special exceptions, they're looking at zoning, they're looking at, um, adequate public facilities ordinances, and deciding whether the neighborhood, that's, or the annexation, we'll go through annexation, the annexation that's before them, that they're gonna recommend to us at the council level, they're looking at the law, okay? We, as council people, have a very different, we are looking at the current residents of the town of Mount Airy, and how does this annexation benefit them? We don't have to discuss adequate public facilities, they, the Planning Commission has already taken care of all of that for us. So these two votes that I get to have, one at the Planning Commission level, is about the law, this one up here is about the people. Thank you very much, please do not support this and vote against it.
Larry?
Yeah, just a couple of points, the difference between the Planning Commission and all the other commissions is that the Planning Commission is guided by Maryland's land use article.
Correct.
None of the other commissions are, that's the difference, and it's a land use article that comes in and mandates that you have a set of guidelines, okay? No other commission has a set of guidelines.
Well, that's.
Okay? Uh, now, as far as the other commissions go, you may be right, you may be wrong, there might be three people at this table that agree with you, but I would tell you, first, we handle the Planning Commission, because they're the ones that are stagnant in this guidelines, uh, discussion, and can't seem to move forward, let's take care of the Planning Commission, and by all means, between now and next month, you can create an ordinance for all the other commissions and, and present that, and then we can vote on that.
And, and I would say, since in nineteen seventy eight, I believe, we reestablished the Planning Commission by state law, I think, and the, the rules and regulations, this draft rules of procedure, are no different than we were already operating under, this is, you know, the Planning Commission is choosing this, um, there are very few actions that they take that we as a town council can change, um, we, we do have the authority in some areas, but it's very few.
Yeah, I would, I guess I would agree with Larry, I understand this one needed to go first, because planning is in that mode where they need to get this drafted, and they need to know which way it's going. Um, for me, I don't think the ex parte thing is an issue at all, because as council members, we already deal with that. The first class I took my first time at MML, went through when the council serves in different purposes, and when they can take ex parte communication, when they can't, we gotta do that anyway, so that's not an issue. So I, I do obviously come down on the side, I think the liaison should have a vote, but that's just me, I understand both sides. Patty, do you wanna put in anything, or just wanna vote on it?
Well, actually, I would like to say something, because I was on the Planning Commission, and I've been on the Planning Commission and have attended all the meetings where we've discussed this, and the reason why this came to light is because, and I don't, this is not a contentious statement, it's just factual, is that Bob brought up a very good point, and that was that if he was, um, a member, uh, on, on the town council, that say, wanted a development to go through, and maybe had some, you know, who knows, maybe there's something passing between the developer and that particular person on the town council, which also serves on the Planning Commission, then his vote would actually be part of, and this is where I disagree with the ex parte communication, because he had that ex parte communication, and he's allowed to have that communication with the developer, he has, his vote is going to be different than my vote as a planning commissioner.
That's because he's done something improper, though.
Well, but if he's, if he has.
Right, if he did something, right.
If he has, and if he's come to the table, and if he has not come out and has not been honest, and that's his own integrity, or her own integrity.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
And nobody else at that table knows it, okay, and he has something to benefit, or she has something to benefit from it, then her or his vote is going to sway a decision that maybe isn't in the best interest of the town.
Right.
So I feel that the people at the table that are making the vote should be the ones that are impartial, and those people are impartial that are on the Planning Commission because they're not allowed to have ex parte communications, and they know that, and they sign up to that when they become a member on the Planning Commission. But as a member of the town council, you're in a legislative capacity.
Not always.
Well.
We, I mean, that's what I'm saying, my, my, my very first thing, and it was actually Doc O'Brien, many, many years ago, wanted me to come and look at his property when he was asking for an annexation, uh, not a, a zoning change on it, and the first thing I did was go to Richard Titus, who was our town attorney then, and said, are we in our legislative capacity, or are we in our judicial capacity here? Because just about two months ago, we served in our judicial capacity out on, um, up on Twin Arrows Road, we could not be involved in ex parte communications on that case. Um, and in this case, Rich said, yes, we're not, I, I could go walk Doc O'Brien's property with him, but there are cases where we are that way now, for example, none of us should have gone out, other than, I guess, a plain drive by, because you can't help it, to that property out on Main Street that we were looking at, we shouldn't have talked to the guy, independent of sitting right here. So we serve, we have that same issue here, already, so if somebody's gonna be dishonest about it, it's, that's gonna happen, but we have that issue here, that's, we deal with that all the time.
Well, I still.
I'm deferring after you, I'm just holding the pen.
Yeah, so, I still believe that the members of the Planning Commission come from a very impartial standpoint, and that they are, they really should not be making a decision until they come to the table, whereas I think that somebody that's on the town council may have come to a decision before, based upon discussions they've had with the applicants.
Okay.
Okay, so, to a couple of good points, Patty raised a good point, and it's one of the things that Scott had talked me into, and so did Larry, but I like the way Jason eloquently put out there, uh, with ex parte, I think the same rules, Tom can correct me, are gonna apply to everybody. It's also commission members, they can't have the ex parte communications, they also fall under these certain guidelines, so, we're assuming that we're voting on this if the guy's gonna be operating improperly, I don't know that that's the right reason to do it. I also heard the word swing, remember, as council members, nobody has to swing you, you have a right as a council member to show up at this table and to put forth any ordinance you want, you don't have to swing anybody or be swine, you were elected, you can show up here and do that anytime you want. Uh, as far as double vote, that's a thing that Scott got me on, and it really, I said, you know what? That's always kinda bothered me, but I did watch a process, we're going through the side ordinance, and there was all these steps leading up to the side ordinance before it got to be an ordinance, and you're right, by the time it gets here, it's a different ordinance, it's gonna prove this, prove that, you're not gonna go back through weeks and weeks and weeks and unravel it, you're gonna accept pretty much a planning, Planning Commission's recommendation, you're not gonna pick it apart, but the person at the table, and Larry is right, and Jason, I think when you're at the table, you're gonna be engaged whether you can vote or not, but really, you have to watch it, there's times, and I was just watching a tape, or, where we did have a lack of quorum, I did, I caught on TV the other day, we had a lack of quorum until a person came in. So, keeping a member engaged, it does help, it does make them a little bit, buy in a little bit more instead of a recording secretary, I think on your integrity, you're gonna be engaged, but there's times where there's lack of quorums that really helps, so I think we ought to keep the people voting. Again, good sides on both arguments, but if you break them down, I don't know what we're trying to fix.
Thank you very much.
Larry, I'll just.
Just a closing comment.
Yeah, close it out.
Yeah, um, if this gets rejected for any reason, it will be up to probably you to present an ordinance that, that would, uh, provide what you want in terms of straightening out the town code, and, and I'd be fine with that.
Yeah, the town code's out of compliance.
Well, it's got me fixed. Mr. Blackford is actually one that, that noticed all of this, that, you know, liaisons were not, liaison, there was nothing in there about liaisons voting, about residency requirements for a planning commission, what we have is not perfect, okay? We try to improve on it, um, and you know, as far as integrity goes, I've been to Ocean City, I believe, six or seven years in a row with you and Larry and, and all the, the town councilmen we've had before, Jason and Peter, and Tom's there sometimes, um, and you know, we, we're not supposed to hang out together, but we all go out to dinner with our families and everything, we don't, we don't talk about shop when we're out to dinner, we have a very, we have a very nice time, we're, we've been, I've, I've turned around in, in a meeting there to find out that the entire Mount Airy Town Council is spotted all over this room.
But Bob, to, to your point, to sum it up, I have heard you say on emails, where you've actually corrected me, and said, Pat, this is illegal communication, that's why when Larry sent out an email, he said, do not reply at all. So just to sum it up a little bit, we are very cognizant of the rules.
Constantly, constantly.
Yeah, we, we are, and we need to be.
And, and just, it just might be that whatever the topic for discussion is at the Planning Commission that we're voting on, well, I may support that, I'm, you know, um, yeah, I, I support it because I support it, Patty, I don't support it because I'm getting a thousand dollars under the table.
And she, and she, you went in here first.
I, I didn't imply that, but you, you did bring that up at the Planning Commission meeting, so that came directly from you.
Hey, Bob, I'm siding with you, don't mess with Patty.
All right.
All right.
Okay, um, let's, let's just bring this to a vote, all in favor of ordinance two thousand, uh, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty one?
Hold on, before we vote, can we, can we still, do we still wanna keep the part with, they all must be residents of the town of Mount Airy?
Yes.
Well, no, can we, can we just either accept or, this, this ordinance that it is, either accept it or go, and, and we'll, we'll approach residents.
Yeah, and then let's, let's do that when we redo.
We'll approach residents.
Yeah, oh, do that, okay, all right. Let's do, I, I'd say up or down it, and if we're gonna, if we want that, we should do that separate. Okay, all right. Um, all in favor of ordinance two thousand and eighteen dash twenty one, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, no, we got two ayes, I'm sorry, didn't attend to me, all opposed, I thought, sorry Debbie, I thought it was going the other way, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Three nay.
Three nay, two aye.
Two aye.
I got in the habit of saying aye here, okay, forgive me.
Yeah, that's a deadly habit.
Yes, it is. Well, I don't say nay very often, okay? All right, two thousand and nineteen dash one, allowing, uh, consumption of alcohol on public property for the chili cookoff, I will, I'll let Bob, uh, push that one, because that's kinda coming from EDC.
Correct.
Larry's gonna second that one.
That's alcohol, just keep in mind, we're gonna put the signs, boundaries that we have up now, and follow all the rules.
It'll be a, it'll be a very, very centralized location, you're not gonna be able to go up Center Street or anything like that.
Yeah, I really wanted this last chili cookoff, because it works so well at the Beards, Beards and Brats, um, that I thought that, you know, we, we should have done something more like that, so I think this is great. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I just have one question though, on the first page, where it says, uh, now get resolved, and it has the date, shouldn't that be changed?
Yeah, sure, update the date.
Because it's, it's going to be June fifteenth, this is saying the eighteenth of May.
Mine says June fifteenth, oh, down the body, okay, yes, okay.
It is, it is.
It says June fifteenth at the top. It says June 15th at the top, but in the body it says, yeah. I assume nobody has an issue with that since it appears, it appears two different places, so we'll go with the June date. Okay.
Good catch.
I think it was a recycled, recycled.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. We've got approval request for the street closing for the chili cook-off. I'll move, we close it. Well, I'll let Bob move that. I'll second it. Bob will move it, I'll second it, since it is kind of an EDC ma'am's a thing. All in favor of closing the street for the chili cook-off on June 15th? Say aye.
We're closing it to Paradise, all the way to Paradise. We're expanding, we're trying to expand a little bit. Calvary wants to get involved, wants us to use their parking lot, you know, so.
It worked, it worked very well at the, um, celebrate Mount Airy.
It, it might be worth mentioning while we're approving all the chili cook-off stuff, that the, I guess, the Irish festival?
Celtic festival.
Celtic festival has moved somewhere else.
They have confirmed that, yes.
So it's on the same, it's on the same weekend, but it's not in Mount Airy this year.
So the Celtic festival, they, they are moving to Urbana?
That's what I heard, somewhere down 270 to a bigger place.
They did confirm that, that they would not be at our meetings with shortbread cookies anymore.
No, they're disappointed. Actually, I sold my box.
But, so we, we definitely missed the Celtic festival. We really liked that, but they felt time to move on. Next up, approval bid for a new generator. You all read this, we had a generator that failed. We need to get that back right away. The lowest bid was Urban Francis LLC at $50,068.5. I move, we accept the bid. Jason's seconding. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, looks like it was all ayes. Okay, under reports, Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna not present a formal report at this time. I'll submit it in the next couple of days. Just want to wish everybody a happy new year, and I believe we're going to reappoint.
Yeah, you have, you have appointments.
Special election.
Yes.
And the commission appointments, reappointments, the mayor, that's me, will be recommending that the election board of Mark Moxley, Richard Swanson, Bruce Walls, and Anne Marie Duckett be reappointed to the Board of Supervisors for elections.
So moved. Got a second?
I'll second.
Bob, Bob's quick hand there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the all-stars of town commissions there, I got to say. That's, 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 that's a, that's a great group. All right, moving on to beautification, parks and rec. Larry?
At parks, we ended up, we got weathered out in, in November, so we did hold a December meeting. Former skate park, we're still looking at options for that footprint. Most viable thing to date is a group that has come in talking about an inclusive ADA-compatible playground and a pavilion. Let's see, Gina, did the surveys close down? Nope.
Do you have signs out for the survey?
We still have a park survey going on, which you can access online to tell us what you're interested in as far as park amenity goes. The dog park passes that we've been using for years, I think we opened the park in 2009. The, we've decided to do away with the dog park tags. It was getting too hard to keep up with. We had a lot of people who were just bringing their dogs out there. We do have the rules listed, so we still expect people to abide by the rules at the dog park, but no longer is a, is a dog park pass required. Pickleball is coming to Mount Airy. We're looking at relining the Village Gate tennis courts sometime this spring. And also the street hockey court that is in Prospect Park, which I noticed this weekend is being used a lot by street hockey players. But we're going to go ahead and line a court in there as well, and have a, a net that can be moved back and forth. So hopefully, we can get some dual use out of that, that street hockey court. The tennis backboard was put up in Watkins Park, so if you want to go out there and, and play, play tennis by yourself, you can do it. Work continues on the state highway grant for Rails to Trails. I understand as the staff has been meeting with them, they've been expressing an interest in improving our plan, which will probably cause us to provide some funding in the next fiscal year to, to provide for the things that they require for us to get our substantial several hundred thousand dollar grant out of them. So, so that'll come up through the, through the budget meetings. And let's see, talked about the park survey. Beautification did not meet in December, but kudos again for all the Christmas decorations they put up, along with the staff and volunteers. And their next meeting is January 15th at 7:00 PM. Parks and Rec next meeting is January 17th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall. Last thing is the Historical Society, the cookbook
Ah.
has been generated, and SK Printing is printing them out as we need them. We're still going through a final edit, but these will be available at the Hall of Fame Dinner, I believe is their slated time for getting these. And there are featured things in here such as Doris Tabler's dump cake, cooking a squirrel, Wendy Peters sausage and egg casserole. My favorite, the George Guevara from Parks and Rec, defibrillator dogs. I just like saying that word.
Defibrillator dogs.
Defibrillator dogs. And, and, and the mayor's chili is in the cookbook. That made the cookbook, too.
How about the famous afterburner chili, Larry? That was yours.
Afterburner, I don't believe we put in there, we, we went for the defibrillator.
The Jell-O mold isn't one of your favorites?
Is it in there?
It is.
We're going to keep that one a secret.
Your toast makes you gain weight.
I'm going to have to read it, cover to cover. Okay, so that's going on. They have a bingo, the Historical Society has a bingo on February 23rd.
Always a lot of fire.
That'll be at the Carnival Grounds, and so that, that'll be coming up. The Southwest Airlines ticket raffle and the tickets for Time Program that they run, which Tony's back there, he's familiar with it. So you volunteer and with, with a nonprofit, and Southwest Airlines provides some tickets to raffle. So we have two tickets being raffled, 10 bucks a chance, and we're only selling 300 tickets. So you buy two tickets, you got a one out of 150 chance, so it's great. Okay, that's going on. And the gift shop also has hats now, so.
Oh, let me see.
These are 20 bucks a piece, got the logo on them, so.
Nice.
Got a logo on it. This hat, I've tested it in four or five different cities, and already put a sweat ring around it, and you can hardly tell. So, anyway.
I'm going to have to get some of those.
Available at the museum, so, and that's my report. Thank you.
Yeah, can I ask a question about pickleball? And I support it. I actually asked Jean if we could go down and try it out, because I think it's a huge thing. We budgeted for it correctly, am I correct?
For the, for the lines on the courts, right?
For the, we budgeted for pickleball? Because I, I just want to be careful when we're doing things. We say we're going to do this at this park. The park boards recommends, when there's another body that's going to make a final decision, we want to be careful. And I was, I'm looking at you because you're directly across.
I'm, I'm trying to move out of the gaze.
But, so we did budget.
It is budgeted.
And there was a thought to already do it there.
Yes, we've been talking about this for a long time.
Well, you, the parks boards have been talking about it. The council knew about this.
I would agree with you.
If it's in their budget, then we approve it.
Yeah, I think it was lying, had them in their budget.
Okay.
Are we going to, are we going to need?
Sometimes, I don't want stuff just popping up around town without, you know, making sure we get through the proper process. That's been happening a little bit.
Use caution, because that, that skate park, every time, the, the little hockey park, and that's been here since I, that's 26, 27 years ago. And every time we say that thing's not getting used, you'll cruise by there at the right time on Sunday afternoon.
That's the real key.
And bang. There's, there's hundreds of kids down there playing and waiting for the next team to get on the court.
When I was a kid, it's interesting, you're going to put the pickleball court there. When I was a kid, we used to play street hockey on the tennis courts in the city of Rockville until they came and added hockey to the sign of things you can't do. So we're doing the opposite. We're, we're taking the hockey court and we're adding pickleball, which is kind of a tennis. Do we need a closing for Rails to Trails?
Property acquisition, we do.
Okay, just, just checking, because I have that in here. All right, thanks, Larry.
Can I ask a question of Larry, though?
Sure.
Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to attend the bingo, but I would like to give a donation, and I went online to the Historical Society, and I didn't see where you could donate online. So if anybody would like to donate, if you can't make it.
Just give it to me, and I'll put it right here.
That's part of it.
Exactly why I did it.
I would tell you, I, I thought there was a donate button on there. Maybe it's, maybe they removed it and put in the bingo button. But Mary's one running that website.
All right, I'll, I'll get in touch with her. I just wanted to double check.
All right, EDC planning, Bob?
Real sweet. We had no regular planning commission meeting in the month of December, but we did have a sign ordinance work session on the, the 17th of December. We have another one planned for one week from tonight, the 14th of January at 7:00, Town Hall, right here in this, in this room. Our next planning commission meeting will be the 28th of January. EDC, and that's, that's, that's it for, for planning commission, EDC. We had no December meeting. Our January meeting will be on the 23rd. And we have, they're, they're doing an empty building, or I'm sorry, a vacant building committee where we're going to, we, we have, we have an inventory of, of the vacant buildings in town. We're going to, going to ride around and see them. We're actually going to take a tour, try to get to see some of these buildings so that as we're trying to talk people into coming in, we know what's available for them to move to.
Can I suggest you have some local real estate agents go with you?
Yes, we do.
Because they're the ones, okay, good.
You know, our, our EDC chairman.
Is a Realtor, but other, other Realtors.
Yes.
Other Realtors as well. Just so.
Commercial, we're, we're, we've actually got some.
Whoever's a commercial Realtor, I'd invite all of them to attend, much like an open house, but you're doing it a little differently.
We're going to have our first planning session meeting on the 16th here.
That way, one real estate agency does have a head up.
Right.
Because there are several in town.
Yeah, and that's what we plan to do, Pat.
Good.
Can I ask you a question, Bob?
Yes.
So has there been any decision made on Hipsley Collection as far as?
Not, not as a, they're, they're, they go till the 15th.
Right.
And, and it'll probably get extended. It was very successful. You know, I'm, I'm waiting for Don Marie to find out just, just how, what we call success in that. And I think, you know, everybody had to have gone in there at least once or twice.
Yeah.
It was well stocked, it was real busy, and they had some neat stuff in there.
I, I talked, I went and talked to Joanne about it end of last week, I'm thinking Thursday. And I got the impression from her that she was intending to continue with it. She was going to see who was going to drop. I think Friday, last Friday, was the date for them to give notice whether they were staying or not. I think some she kind of knew were probably going to go, but some were talking about expanding. So the impression I got from her was, she's thinking of keeping it going.
Okay.
So it, it looks like.
Good question, too.
Very successful.
Yeah.
So some businesses learned it won't work for them, some learned it will.
Well, and some, some businesses just don't get along well with others.
Yeah.
I mean, seriously, I, I mean, I know that from the shop next to my office, that he, they would rotate people in and out of there because some people, you know, they want more space, or, oh, this guy's stuff is too close to mine, or, you know.
Sure.
You know, you know, particularly when you're dividing things, what are the, you know, and I'm not saying these are the groups, but what are the games doing over here next to my books? Not, not that those are the groups, but those things come up, there's candy over here by my books, which, yeah.
Joanne's been able to, I think she's been able to pull something really special off here.
And, 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 and she can, she can do it.
I hope we're able to continue it.
She, she can do it. She's very talented at that. Is that it, Bob?
That's it.
All right. Trash and sustainable, Jason?
No meeting, next meeting, January 16th, 7:00 PM at Town Hall.
All right. And we have a tree pickup?
Tree pickup this Saturday.
This Saturday, okay, all right.
And they will pick up bags of grass and leaves and the whole rest.
They have a full yard.
All right. Have to decide if I want to drag my tree out.
That's a big tree you've got, Peter.
It's cut into pieces. The only way I get it out of the house is to disassemble it. Jason Rhodes, Patty?
Well, we had our very first meeting, and it was just wonderful. Our new chairperson is Jennifer Smith. Our secretary is Lynn Galetti. Our new members are Lucy Regal and Susan Arbison. And the existing members are Brian Beta and Cindy Donegan. So since we had all new members, well, a lot of new members, I decided that perhaps Thursday, it was either the third or the fourth Thursday of the month, every other month, starting in February going through December. And so we, we took a poll, and we decided that the second Tuesday, the beginning of the month, would be beneficial for all the members. So tomorrow night will be the next Street and Roads meeting. And we also are going to start at 7:00 as opposed to 7:30. That seemed to suit everybody that was also on the commission. The, the, some of the things that we talked about, obviously, you heard that we are having issues over at Beck, Beck, the acre circle.
It's a tongue twister.
It is. And so we're, we're working very diligently to try to, you know, help the business owner, keep her business there, as well as help the people that actually have to live there on a day-to-day basis and drive back and forth so that it's safer for everybody concerned. So we're working on that, as well as we developed, there's an agenda that's on the Mount Airy website, and I would recommend that everybody take a look at that. And if you're interested in coming tomorrow night, please come out. There's some old business that we've sort of took from very old agenda meetings. And so, and then we put some new items on there as well. So we'll be covering that tomorrow night.
Okay. Water and Sewer, did not meet. Our meeting would have been the day after New Year's. Our next meeting will be February 6th. Monica?
Okay, our department heads are working on their individual budget numbers and also employee annual evaluations. So we have them certainly pretty much worked out. The construction of the Mary Dell Gardens storm water pond has been delayed just because of all the rain that we've had. So their new completion date, I think, Barney checked me on this, is mid-March?
Sounds about right.
Okay.
I assume they have now successfully killed all life in that stream, trying to save it.
They're, they're building the dam wall right now. For our downtown master plan study, they're still on, on schedule for getting the final draft report done by mid-January. And right now, our town staff is kind of looking at their short-term, long-term implementation schedule and kind of adjusting that and sending those recommendations back to the consultants. And that includes initiating any ordinance changes to support the goals of the plan recommendations. And lastly, I say this every year about this time, please check our website to see if our snow emergency plan is in effect because that requires you to take your vehicle off the road. And if we have a really long-duration storm, please try not to go out because it helps if there's less traffic on the road. Doug can attest to that for me, so.
All right, thanks.
One last.
Well, town attorney's report.
I have one more thing, too, after.
Oh, did Monica's, all right.
Okay, after whoever.
Okay, well, Tom's up next, and then.
Okay, over the last month, worked on the CSX acquisition. Also worked on the Dorsey Town Annexation Agreement. Reviewed as well a proposed MOU between our Police Department and the Board of Education on school bus policing. Attended the work, the signs ordinance workshop with the planning commission. Also attended the meeting with the ambassador to discuss the liaison issue as well.
All right, thanks, Tom.
We got, we all got an email, I think we all got it, about small cell legislation coming to town, so that was, that was a hot topic at the MML meeting that Patty and.
Bobby, you were there?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. That Patty, Bob and I attended, so that did come up as an MML topic. Did we get a code enforcement's report?
We did.
Okay, I didn't see a copy in mind. That's okay, just, just, just make sure I get it. Review that. Okay.
All right. I'm going to move that we go into a closed session, and then immediately at the end of that session, this meeting will be adjourned for the purposes of discussing the acquisition of real property and to consult to obtain legal advice. The two subjects are Rails to Trails and Plumbary Parking Lot. I will still move, who is the second? Bob, is that a second?
Well, that's a second, yes.
Okay. Hush hour.
Aye, yeah.
Washabaugh.
Aye.
King.
No, yeah, yes.
Poya.
Aye.
Hell, aye. Okay, we're all in favor, Bob.
Two, two seconds here. There is an opening, there's an art opening. We're, we're trying something new in, in downtown Mount Airy with getting back to the arts.
This Saturday, right?
This Saturday, 6:00 to 8:00, right here in the lobby, in the town council chamber. Charlie Trapp and his little, I think, a jazz duo will be, come down. It's, it's, it's free. It's two local artists, Steve Demato and Kathy Williams, maybe? Kathy Peterson.
I wish I'd known earlier. I already booked myself that evening.
Kathy Peterson and Steve Demato will be, will be. Kathy Peterson and Steve DeMato will be, will, will have the lobby out here, and they're awful good and a lot of fun, and we remember them from before. Thank you very much.